Welcome to our meeting. The date is October 8, 2024. The time is 7:00 PM. This is an open meeting of the Grand Island City Council. The City of Grand Island abides by the Open Meetings Act in conducting business. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is displayed in the back of this room as required by state law. The City Council may vote to go into closed session on any agenda item as allowed by state law. I now ask that you stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The city clerk will now perform roll call.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Present.
Councilmember Kaczynski.
Present.
Councilmember Hawzy.
Present.
Councilmember Sheard.
Present.
Councilmember Pollak.
Present.
Councilmember Fitzki.
Present.
Council President Stelk.
Present.
Councilmember Nickerson.
Present.
Councilmember Lanfair.
Yeah, here.
Councilmember Conley.
Present.
And Mayor Steele.
Present. Also present are Jill Grenier, the city clerk, Laura McCallum, the city administrator, Patrick Brown, the assistant city administrator, CFO, Carrie Fisk, the city attorney, will join us shortly, Keith Kurtz, the public works director, and Matthew Gleason, the finance director. Individuals who have appropriate items for City Council consideration should complete the request for future agenda items form located at the information booth. If the issue can be handled administratively without council action, notification will be provided. If the item is scheduled for a meeting or study session, notification of the date will be given. A sign up sheet was available in the lobby for individuals wishing to provide input on any of tonight's agenda items. If you did not sign up to speak on an agenda item, please come forward, state your name and the agenda topic on which you will be speaking. No one has come forward, so we shall continue. The first item on our agenda is a recognition of Jody Holm for 40 years of service with the City of Grand Island Finance Department. Jody Holm, would you please meet me and Jill Grenier, the city clerk, down at the front podium, please?
Good evening. I'm supposed to have a microphone, but the battery is dead. I'm yelling at you. We always like to take time and acknowledge our longstanding employees who we value so much. The city couldn't operate without people like you. And I want to tell the folks gathered here and those who are watching tonight about you. On October 1, 1984, you were hired with the Cert City as a cashier 1. On March 30, 1987, you moved to clerk 3, customer service. On February 1, 1989, you became utility clerk 3. And on August 1, 1992, accounting clerk 2. To honor your service to the City of Grand -- oh, I have to ask, who was the mayor when you were hired, do you remember?
Bill Wright.
Okay, Bill Wright.
Chuck hired me.
Oh, did he? Good job, didn't it, wasn't it? Good hire, good hire. Well, I'm glad we can have that connection, that's wonderful. So, we have to present to you this 40-year service award, and it states, "We hereby express our sincere appreciation to Jody Holm for your loyalty, diligence, and dedicated service during your tenure with the City of Grand Island," signed by me as mayor and by Matthew Gleason, the finance director. Congratulations. [applause] And the city clerk also has -- well, I have another one here, you ready? And the city clerk also has a chance to present to you.
Thanks, Jill.
And I know that Matthew Gleason would like to say some words about you. Would you come forward, Mr. Gleason? And then I'm going to give you a chance to speak if you like. I hope you had some observations after 40 years with us, but Matthew, go ahead.
Keep it short and sweet here. Doing anything for 40 years takes dedication, let alone doing it while adding in a couple of location changes that you dealt with, and two billing software conversions, so bless you for that. Thank you for your hard work and dedication to both the Finance Department and the City of Grand Island.
Thank you.
I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Knowing that you have to speak up, would you share a few words with us?
Let's see, I started out at the old, old city hall. We moved over here, and it was interesting because we just put all our stuff on a cart, pushed it across the street, and set up shop, and we were ready to go. And I guess we went from using manual typewriters and sharing computers on swivels to, you know, having all the latest technology now. So, it's been an interesting 40 years. I mean, just the people that you meet, friends you make, and yeah.
We are proud of your service.
Thank you, thank you.
Good job.
Mayor, if I could add, I remember Jody's application because when she came in and applied, one of her references, she'd worked with my wife. And so I asked her reference how she was, and she said she was excellent. Hire her. So in fact, we did, and she has been, so thank you, Jody.
The next item on our agenda is 6B, Presentation of the Food and Beverage Occupation Tax Oversight Committee 2024 Annual Report. Mr. Dupay, is that you?
Yes, sir.
Before we start, I think you are soon to leave this committee.
That's correct.
How long have you been on this committee?
I've been chair for the past eight years since it was formed, Mayor.
I want to thank you for your service. I know that you've been a real steady hand, and you have pursued your duties diligently and seriously to protect the interest of the taxpayers. So, thank you very much, Ron. I appreciate it, we all do.
Thank you, Mayor. The pleasure's certainly been all mine. The Food and Beverage Occupation Tax Oversight Committee consists of Carl Cosbon, Brad Bauer, and myself. So you have an accountant, a banker, and attorney. I'm sure there's a joke somewhere, but we'll move on, we won't get into that. The committee was -- or, excuse me, the tax was initially enacted by council in 2008 to provide funding for state fair-related expenses and the city's commitment, financial commitment in order to have the fair moved to Grand Island. There is a sunset clause for the tax to terminate in 2016, but Grand Island voters voted to continue the tax and include taxing alcoholic beverages in 2016 on a perpetual basis. The Oversight Committee was also created by council in 2016. Our purpose is to -- or, our task is to advise council and community with respect to the tax, confirm tax funds are properly accounted for and expended on eligible projects, provide an annual report to council, which of course we're doing this evening. We meet on a quarterly basis and have consistently for the past eight years. I have a few numbers for you this evening, which I think are pretty impressive. The city has collected over $21 million in food and beverage tax funds since 2016. The city's collected over $3 million for the fiscal year ending September 30th for the second consecutive year in a row. Disbursements of tax funds include the Veterans Athletic Complex Ball Field, City Parks, and related items totaling approximately $10 million. Grow Grand Island approximately $3.2 million, and State Fair payments of approximately $3.1 million. There's currently approximately $3.4 million on hand in the tax fund. Annual scheduled payments from the tax fund currently include Husker Harvest Days of $200,000 through a longstanding commitment to retain Husker Harvest Days in Grand Island, State Fair payment approximately $500,000 per year, City Parks bond payment of approximately $500,000 per year, and Grow Grand Island of $500,000 per year. So we do have 1.7 committed on an annual basis out of that roughly $3 million that the tax is currently generated. I'm happy to announce on behalf of the committee that all receipt, expenditure, and distribution of city food and beverage tax funds are compliant with applicable city ordinances and agreements. Finally, I just want to add, as the mayor was halfway referencing, there's an agenda item for the ordinances later this evening. I'll be home watching the Dodgers Padres play, so I just want to speak very briefly on that. The purpose of that is to combine this committee with the Citizens Advisory Review Committee. Brad, Carl, and myself are all in favor of that. That makes perfect sense to minimize staff time and proceed in an orderly basis moving forward. So, none of us object, we all think that's an excellent idea, but I think it's an appropriate time for me to step aside and let somebody else fill my shoes as we move forward. So I want to thank everybody for the opportunity to serve. The city and Grow Grand Island have been excellent to work with. Every question has been asked, there's been complete -- it's been answered, I should say, there's been complete transparency. And I know he's -- I don't think he's here this evening, but need to thank Brian Schultz for putting up with my nitpicking for the last eight years on a regular basis. So, the pleasure's certainly been mine. I think the Oversight Committee, as the expanded committee will continue to do, provides a valuable benefit to the community. The business of the public should be conducted in public, and that's the motto of the City of Grand Island, and this is just a small part of that process, I think. So, with that, if anybody has any questions, I'll sure do my best this evening.
No questions?
Okay.
Just want to reiterate, I've known you for over 40 years.
Long time.
You're a classy lawyer.
Have a good evening.
6C, Camp Augustine Master Plan Presentation. Mr. McCoy, are you going to kick us off?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. So after the city purchased the Camp Augustine property, we hired a consulting group called Big Muddy Workshop to lead us through a master planning process to gather community engagement, work with stakeholders, and come up with a plan for that property. John Royster's here, and with the permission of the mayor, I'd like to invite him up and give the presentation from that master plan.
Mr. Royster, you'll have to state your name.
My name is John Royster. I'm a professional landscape architect licensed by the state of Nebraska, and I am with a company called Big Muddy Workshop, which recently merged with Benish Engineering, which is, has an office here in town. And I -- a person who's been really important in this process is former city employee Terry Brown, who has given us a lot of invaluable information and local insight. Now, one thing I'm going to tell you, Mayor, we're not going to talk about the statute this evening. And Laura's going to rein me in when I get too excited and we hit, what was, 55 minutes, did you say we only have? So anyway, so, this is a wonderful project. This is for, for the community, it's a wonderful project, for the region, it's a wonderful project, and I really feel fortunate to have been your consultant on this project. Very rarely, in any place in Nebraska, can you find two miles of Platte River that are publicly owned. And if you look at the plan that's up on your monitors, you can see this area which goes from 281 on the west, where we have the existing Mormon Island State Recreation Area, to Camp Augustine, which the city very wisely purchased a couple of years ago, and then other land, which is in the process of either, other land, which is owned by state agencies, and that's really all we need to say. But it's about 600 acres, and that's a big piece of public land in Nebraska. We're a state that has something like 3% public land, it's an incredibly low percentage for a western state, but that's due to our agricultural history, and that's fine. So one thing that I have learned in 40 years of practice is the best way to use your money, use your clients' money, is to avoid spending it when you can. So what we did is we did kind of an extensive environmental analysis, and if you look at the picture that's up on the screen, you can see at the top, there's kind of a triangle, and I'm going to just outline it here. You see this area right here. If we're going to make this a park or a camp or whatever, or what we want to do is avoid permanent development within environmental, sensitive environmental areas. So we want to stay out of floodplains, we want to stay out of floodways, we want to avoid wetland mitigation. The best money you can spend on environmental protection is no money by simply avoiding creating problems that require you to correct things. So, this, this shows about 81 acres, I believe it is, of the property that includes the state land and the city's Camp Augustine, and what is developable. And then what we did is we went through a process, and one thing I didn't mention is we had three public meetings on this project. The mayor also appointed an eight-person community leader group, which we're wonderful to work with, and I tell you what, it's kind of like being back in high school. They asked very good questions, they held their feet to the fire, and we really came up with a better plan because of that. So what we did was we looked at different activities that could happen in the camp, and this is a lot of information, I realize, on one slide, and this is part of your packet if you want to go back to it later. But we came up with an idea of where we would position different things within the camp. Now, the good thing is, is I think these are horrible to look at. Who, who's enjoying looking at these plans? Okay, well, we're going to fix that problem here real quick. So this is the master plan that shows the different land uses within the camp. Essentially, everything that's in the floodway floodplain will only be temporary uses or day uses, and by temporary uses would be camp, would be tent camping that could be controlled and not occur when flooding happens. And then everything that's permanent development is above the floodplain elevations of this area. This is just a little blow up. One thing that was very important in talking to Gammon Parks, and Gammon Parks was an advisor as far as the recreational activities that would occur on this site, was that they said we badly, badly, badly need RV camping in central Nebraska. And not, not just their agency, but as a whole, as a community, and they need that. So we made a very large effort to create high quality, actually higher than, actually a very nice quality of campground for RVs, and there's about 104 RV camp pads. One thing that we wanted to do too is we wanted to use things that are there from the Boy Scout era, this is the old scout headquarters, that would be repurposed, Rangers residents would be repurposed, existing maintenance buildings would be repurposed, the Boselman family at one point donated money for a picnic shelter, that would be kept and repurposed. So anything that was there that was reusable, we really made a conscious attempt or conscious effort to, to reuse that. So what I want to do now is, we've gone from looking straight down at the camp, and we're going to kind of fly around of it, fly around of it, fly around the area in a low, low, low-level airplane. And so what we are doing here is we're looking west, we're kind of right over South Locust Street, and Camp Augustine Road, you can see is labeled in this, and that's where the county road comes. And rather than enter the camp like you do now, we're going to start the entrance a little further to the east, and then we're going to sprinkle things throughout the camp, throughout the whole area of the camp, that have different activities. And we'll see all these in a little more detail, so I'm not going to go through what they are. As you enter into the main part of the camp, one thing that Gammon Parks thinks would really be important on this site, and I know it's one of the mayor's priorities, is an outdoor education center where children and adults can go and learn about our environment. And in the central Platte River Valley, I mean, we are really internationally unique here. And sometimes because we live here, we forget that, but it's something that can really be as given as an educational thing. The other thing is, is we had an economist, we had two economists from UNK help us look at what would be the economic impact of this park. And one of the things they came up with in studying other similar sites is, one of the most important things to inject new money into your economy, and somebody coming from Hastings and camping at this, or from Grand Island, is keeping money in our economy, but it isn't making it grow. So the way to grow your economy is actually to have events that attract people from outside your local area, and they say that's about a 50-mile radius. One of the things that's really, the key nice areas of the old Boy Scout camp is this big central area here that, that will, that you're seeing now, and that's a perfect area for events and things like that. Here you get to see this a little bigger. This is about the size of three downtown city blocks in Grand Island. So it'd be a significant space that could be used for public events, whether educational. Gammon Parks is really interested in having their outdoor expo in the central part of the US at this site, they think it would really be good. As we move a little further west, we wanted to have a nature playground that would engage kids in the, in the environment. There's also what's called the canoe lake, that we would be reusing for kayak pond and some fishing and things like that. And then you start to see the RV campgrounds here on the one side. One thing that's really important about having a river and having a 600-acre site is not making it feel small. And one way you do it is you get people out of their cars and you get them on their feet. And so there actually are a proposal for two pedestrian bridges, bridges that would span the river within the park itself, and then there will be a third one that's part of the South Locust Trail that the city has planned right beside South Locust. We've turned around now, and now we're looking east down the river, and you can get an idea of these camp pads. We have pull, we have about 15 pull-through camp pads, we have backend camp pads, everything would be a paved pad, these would be full service, they're programmed as full-service camp pads, so they would have power, water, there would be Wi-Fi, there would be electric, and there would be sanitary sewer at each one of the, each one of the sites. One thing that we talked about, and this was something that the committee really keyed in on, was not just having camping, but having an experience above that. One thing that, that Gammon Parks thought would be successful would be to have camper-type cabins, almost like you'd see at a KOA, and I don't know if that's a trademarked name, if it is, I apologize for using it, and then having kind of a central building that would be kind of a picnic shelter with some, with some kitchen facilities with it. Here, we're kind of back at the east side of the park, the outdoor education center is here, and Locust would be just behind us. Education would be a big part of the site, and here we're showing just the outdoor education center that would be equipped to have buses come visit it. This is the backside, and a lot of times we'll do outdoor terraces for outdoor learning there. Central green space, again, we've talked a little about that, five and a half acres, three square blocks in downtown Grand Island. Again, here you can see it again. And then, you know, this could be everything from Thursday night food trucks to wine, wine events, different types of events during the weekends to attract people to the area that would fill both the RV campgrounds as well as local hotels. And then, this is just an, again, again, just an idea of how big that space is, how you really could locate a fairly significant event in it. One of the things that Gammon Parks has found that's very successful up in Shadrin State Park, and they build another one of these in another state parks, are indoor shooting ranges, and it's not guns, what it is, is it's archery on one side and air-powered pellet guns on the other, and it's just extremely popular, gives, gives kids something to do, gives families something to hang out and do together. So that, that would be that. This would actually reuse one of the buildings from the scout, the center portion of this building is the former scout store at the camp. This is the backside of it, again, we've got an opportunity to create a really nice courtyard that again could be used for education. As we jump and look a little more at the west portion of it again, what I want to point out is, this bridge connecting here connects from the southwest corner of the current camp over to Mormon Island. One thing that we found that's really important is to create loop trails, and with three bridges, we would have the opportunity to have trails on both sides of the river that would allow people to do a one-mile walk or a three-mile walk, depending on where they started. Again, we'd have the kayak pond that would be stocked with fish, and then we have, this is the west cabin group, there's two cabin groups, we look at the one on the east side, this is the one on the west side. And then what we're calling the bike trail is that paved trail that would be, provide for walking experience as well. Nature play is something that is really, it's, it's, it's kind of reinjecting what a lot of we, a lot of us, a lot of, I'm not sure how to say that, it's getting kids outdoors to experience the outdoors, and it's climbing on logs, and it's climbing on rocks, and it's looking at plants, and it's not looking at something that's made out of metal and plastic, but actually engaging kids. It's open end play that lets them make up what the story is rather than look at a piece of playground equipment that tells them. Again, just another story, rolling hills, different plant materials. This is a close-up of the kayak canoeing lake. We envision that there would be the opportunity to have a concessionaire that would like, would rent kayaks, and also maybe pass out fishing equipment for families that don't have that. And then, again, this is, this is the current camp headquarters building that would be repurposed as a park operations, and it would also have RV registration, there would be a dump station for people leaving the camp at the end of the week. And then there's a large existing parking lot there, which is now just gravel, which would be used for event parking. And we've set the design up so you could have traffic, really pretty good traffic control during large events, and people would actually exit the site using the current entrance to the site. Here again, the reason, what I wanted to show this, show this to you for, typically in Gammon Parks campgrounds, there's about 30 feet between individual RVs. One thing that Gammon Parks advises on is if you want to have a really high-quality environment, to spread that out. So we have, so we have done that, and, which makes it a little more desirable, we also have off-road, or off-the-street sidewalks, so people don't have to take the sidewalk to the restroom if they want to go there. When I talked earlier about avoiding expenses, this is a wetland, which is a pretty significant wetland, it's about eight or nine acres. We actually just designed the built, designed the campground around that to avoid it, so we didn't have to spend a dime on mitigating damage to it. Again, here you can see the, see one of the pedestrian bridges, this one would be about midpoint between Locust and 281. And then the other thing that we looked at is, the, the channel that goes, that separates Camp Augustine from Mormon Island doesn't have as much water in it as typically the channel just to the south that goes under the interstate and then goes under Locust right after you get off the interstate. So what we would be looking on both of these is river takeouts to encourage people to kayak. With this, this one actually shows the one that's going through Camp Augustine or between Augustine and Mormon Island. But a takeout, and again, it's just something that makes, it's unique to be able to go a couple of miles. We've spoken with the Crane Trust out on Alva Road, they would be willing to allow people to put in on the main channel out there, and then we'd need some signage to get people to the southern channel that, that I just spoke about that has water a little longer. Again, this is just a view from, Locust is right behind us, and you can see that east cabin group, and then you see outdoor education center, that shooting range I talked about. And then one thing we would allow in the floodplain would be tent camping, which can easily be controlled, your water doesn't come up in 10 minutes, it comes up over several days. And if it was going to be just too wet to use that area, they would just And if it was going to be just too wet to use that area, they would just simply close that down.
And that's where the Boy Scouts camped for decades.
Yeah, and, and that's what's great. I mean, what we really did, I didn't do a good job of mentioning that, but we really are trying to honor the Boy Scout legacy. They did so many things right here. There are some buildings, like the mess hall, that are just beyond the pale. But anything that was reusable, we really worked hard to reuse it. And then, this is, we're just back to the, the straight-down view of the, of the master plan. So, with that, I want to commend the mayor in that he created a committee of just great people to work with. They really represented the community. But one other thing that he and the administrator did was they encouraged us, and they, I don't know if you encouraged or you required us, but we found a minority engagement consultant who worked with us, Carlos Beriantos, who did a wonderful job, engaged a lot of people in, that we would have never touched. And so, that, I think, really helped, because his input and his discussions with them influenced the plan as well. Well, one, one activity we had that I didn't mention in our first public meeting is we had pictures of different recreational activities. And everybody that came to that meeting, and that meeting was during a major severe thunderstorm warning, and I think we still had 25 people. But you got four blue dots and red, one red dot. The blue dots were worth one point, the red dot was worth five points, and we had people pick the activities that they thought were most important and most appropriate for the site. And that is actually the activities that we integrated into the master plan. So, these, these were things that the community thought were important, not things that we just carried in our pocket into the job and said, "Well, let's, let's have, let's have RV camping." No, that was, RV camping, tent camping, and were all very important. So, at that point, I would be willing to entertain any questions.
Well, if you pencil all this out, it's probably about a $45 million development if we did it. Obviously, it'll be done in stages.
Yeah.
But that's going to mean, we're going to have to do some local fundraising. And, and I wouldn't expect that this would develop all at once, anyway.
In, in my 40 years of practice, I had one project, we had one park that was a $4 million park. And it was developed all within one year. And it was because a very wealthy local person wanted to, it was a site his wife loved, and his wife was in bad health, and he wanted to see it done. And so, I mean, Falls Park in Sioux Falls, which we worked on for 12 years. Yeah, yeah, so to, to the mayor's point, this would not be done at one time. And the other thing is, we've talked a little about what would make sense as far as phasing. There would probably be about three phasing, three, three phases which would break it into different uses, and then also kind of balance your money, so it probably would come out fairly similar.
Council members, any questions for John Royster? At this time, I would like to thank the members of our planning team. They are Sandra Barrera from Hall County Extension, Matt Fong from Crane Trust, and the Hastings City Council, Jerry Milner from Central Platte Natural Resources District, Melissa Delay from Greater Grand Island Community Foundation, Matthew Fisher, the Superintendent of Grand Island Public Schools, Dr. Jeff Edwards, the Superintendent of Northwest Public Schools, Cindy Johnson with the State Fair, and Lupita Monta, Montana's with the Multicultural Coalition. And I just had some thoughts about this. I'm so happy you presented this tonight. But in my opinion, the development of Camp Augustine into a state park, which is our goal, is an ambitious goal worthy of a great city like Grand Island. As John mentioned, about 97% of all Nebraska land is privately owned. There is very little land set aside for public use and enjoyment. And by developing and joining Camp Augustine with Mormon Island, we can create an area of public-access land in excess of 600 acres. I'm going to tell you right now, there is very little chance of the Nebraska Legislature supporting us unless we show there is strong local support for an expansion of the state park system. Now, it must be acknowledged that the Nebraska Gaiman Parks is anxious to expand its park programs in central Nebraska, because, because it has very little presence here, except for Mormon Island, which is hemmed in by wetlands. I would say this, we are following in the footsteps of President Teddy Roosevelt, who pushed for conservation of natural spaces by creating five national parks. Teddy was a bombastic, hard-charging man, and one writer quipped that Old Faithful in Yellowstone was Teddy's only rival in intermittent spouting. Having enjoyed our national parks, I understand why Teddy spouted off, and I understand why his face is on Mount Rushmore. One thing that motivated Teddy Roosevelt was that he was an ornithologist, that's a bird lover, lover. And one evening, he saw one of the last flocks of passenger pigeons, and he knew that unless natural spaces were preserved, that they and the wildlife would be lost forever. Teddy did not have an easy go in creating national parks. Old Joe Cannon, the most powerful House Speaker ever, became an obstructionist. Joe Cannon was an anti-conservationist, and he pledged that not one cent would be spent on scenery. Joe Cannon met his match when a man from Nebraska named George Norris led a revolt against Cannon's leadership. If you like natural spaces, you can also thank our Nebraskan, George Norris. I mention this history because preserving nature for future generations is something that Americans have embraced since, since the Lacey Act established Yellowstone in 1894. The idealism that Teddy Roosevelt brought to the fight to preserve land for the public is best demonstrated by his quote, "That much has been given us, and much will rightly be expected of us." Asking us to preserve and keep Camp Augustine for the enjoyment of future generations is not too much to ask of us. I intend to work to raise money for Camp Augustine. I believe that the people of Grand Island will give to this project, because people respond to great ideas that have a lasting impact for the betterment of humankind. I thank you, Mr. Royster. I appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you very much. I enjoyed this taking.
We now must leave our regular meeting and convene as a Board of Equalization. Is there a motion to leave our regular meeting and convene as a Board of Equalization? Mr. Stelv?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion to leave our meeting for Board of Equalization.
Thank you. Mr. Lanfair?
I second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Now, as a Board of Equalization, we are here to consider and determine benefits for South Locust Business Improvement District. Mr. Gleason, please present.
Hi, the, thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council, sorry. The ordinance that created the, the South Locust BID Board requires that a proposed budget for the district be approved by the BID Board and forwarded to the City Council for consideration. The board met and approved the 2425 budget, which provides for special assessments in the amount of $104,617. On September 10, '24, the City Council met, approved the BID budget, and set the date for Board of Equalization as today. And as we said, the $104,617 would be charged to property owners based on their front footage. Notice was mailed to owners within the BID and published in the Grand Island Independent on September 17, '24, and October 1, as required.
Council members, a motion is in order. Ms. Gazinski?
Mayor, I would move to approve the special assessments for the South Locust Business Improvement District.
Thank you. And Mr. Lanfair?
I second.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
A motion is in order to approve the consent agenda. I may have to return to regular meeting. Is there a motion to return to our regular meeting? Mr. Lanfair?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Oh, I, I got ahead of us, Mr. Lanfair. We need to return to our regular meeting.
You're right.
So, you make a motion to return to our.
I make a motion we return to our regular meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Nickerson?
I second the motion.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
There are a motion to approve the consent agenda items 8A through P. Mr. Lanfair?
I move we approve the consent agenda A through P.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Pollak?
I would second that.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion?
Matt needs to talk. I think we have to pull item 8M, right? Okay.
So, we're pulling 8M?
Yes.
Okay, so, Mr. Lanfair's motion is to approve the consent agenda without 8M. Is that correct, Mr. Lanfair?
Yes, it is.
Is that the second's the same?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion?
Motion adopted.
So, having pulled 8M, we take up approving the Grand Island Police Department to apply to the fiscal year '24 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Award Grant for Federal Assistance.
8M or 8N?
8M. Is this just to approve the amounts?
Yeah.
Okay.
And this was a change of amount from?
It's still at $4,000.
Right, we added $4,000. So, from $15,585 to $19,585, $45,000.
Yeah, so, we need a motion to amend the resolution to reflect that new amount. So, I changed it to amend.
Ms. Gazinski?
Thank you, Mayor. I would move to amend the resolution regarding item 8M and change the grant request amount.
Thank you, Mr. Hossi.
I would second that motion to amend.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Mayor, Council.
Thank you. Chief Denny?
We need to actually do the motion.
Oh, we need to do the motion. All right. Motion's in order, Council. Ms. Gazinski?
Thank you, Mayor. I would move to approve Resolution 2024-251.
Thank you. Mr. Hossi?
I would second the motion to approve.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Public hearings, 9A, public hearing on acquisition of utility easement, 302, 310, 381, and 326, Josh Avenue, and 303, 311, 319, and 327, Michaela Avenue. Good evening, Mr. Schmitz. Before you report on this, would you tell us about the activities of the utilities crew responding to Hurricane Helene?
Yeah, I actually had some PowerPoints, I think, that may be in here. I have one. If I can get to the drive, which isn't showing up there. Which one is it? Thank you, Keith. Oh, web top, there you go. Stuck it in the right folder, so, there we go. There we go. So, that's the group that we sent down to Georgia. They were gone for 12 days. They tagged team with Lincoln Electric System, who we tend to piggyback with. So, let me give the next slide quick. So, that's where they ended up. The first night, they ended up staying in Jonesboro, Arkansas. And then, the second night, they stopped in Birmingham to let the hurricane go through. So, on the bottom right, I know it's hard to see, but where's, where, you can see the path of the hurricane, so they set up just west of there. And then, the second night, they reported Albany, which is who we were called to go help. And when the hurricane came through, it didn't hit Albany hard, but it hit northeastern Missouri hard, as you can see from the rainfall map at the top right of the screen. So, our crews got red dispatched to Washington, Georgia. They would sleep in Athens, because Washington was totally out of power and totally saturated. So, every day, they would take the 45-minute drive back to Athens and then to, to Washington, Georgia. And they, on the list of things they did were, they connected a backup feeder to a hospital, the water supply to the town, and at the, I've got just four slides here, five, but at the end, I'll have some of the nice comments that were posted online from people in Georgia who witnessed our crews down there. And I got to thank Jeff Warren, who gave me some of the information from the trip here. So, just real quickly, this was their route home, so you can see kind of what a journey it was for them. So, after they finished up in Washington, they were, it sounded like we were going to get picked up again by another small utility, which we didn't, so they were able to come home, and they got home this weekend. So, there's just a few pictures, working in the dark, working on transformers, trees, you name it. This is the group with LES. So, this is, LES has actually mechanics in their group, so as you're going down the road and have to have things worked on, it's a good benefit. And then, just lastly, here's some of the nice postings that were put online, kind of the reason they keep the guys going, it's why we do it. A lot of nice things said by people down in Georgia. The email on the bottom right was from the utility that we helped out down there, so you can see the yawn in the email. But it, it keeps us, the guys really like helping out, and it's completely volunteer. We put a lot of, we get fully reimbursed, but you still put a lot of strain on the vehicles. So, with Milton now bearing down, we plan to sit this one out at the moment and just kind of get our stuff back together. And losing six guys for 12 days also affects our operations, so reliability in Grand Island first, and then, when we can help others, we do.
People of Grand Island are very proud of their service to people in Georgia so far away. Thank you for that presentation.
The item here tonight is for an easement at Jackson Second Sub to feed four transformers at that sub to add an extra four feet to the easement. Thank you.
Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item? If not, public hearing is now closed.
Council members, a motion is in order on 9A. Mr. Pollak?
Yes, I'd make a motion to approve 2024-255.
Thank you. Ms. Gazinski?
Thank you, Mayor. I would second that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Resolution 10A, accepting the proposal of Venue Works, Inc. for management of the Heartland Event Center and authorizing the development and execution of a management agreement with Venue Works, Inc. And Serge, you'll have to state your name.
I'm Steve Peters. I'm the founder and CEO.
I'm Steve Peters. I'm the founder and CEO of Venue Works.
I'm Tom Richter, Regional Vice President for Venue Works.
Welcome. Thank you for being here.
Thanks for giving us time tonight. We're here because we responded to an RFP for the management of the Heartland Event Center. Our proposal was selected, and that's resulted in the contract that's in front of you. I just want to tell you a little bit about Venue Works. We're based in Ames, Iowa. We're employee-owned. We're the only venue management company that emphasizes specifically and focuses on municipal and university accounts that are in the mid-level size. So communities that, like yours, are like Park City, Kansas, Cedar Rapids, Iowa, Jefferson City, Missouri, these are the places where we manage facilities. We were started in 1996. We manage over 50 venues in about two dozen communities, 3,000 employees, and we consider it our job to help provide for the enrichment of the communities that we serve. Each of these buildings that we get involved with was built with some kind of a dream involved, a promise, if you will, that there would be an enrichment to the community. In a lot of ways, we, easy to talk about economic impact, but there's cultural, educational, recreational impact. It just adds an excitement point to your community, and that's what we excel in, helping to recreate that dream and find new excitement to bring to these venues. These are sort of the five component parts of what goes into venue management. You got to imagine that we have this, or we wouldn't be here. Yeah, I know, that, it's getting pretty small, it looks like the bottom line of an eye chart, but finance and administration, obviously, with HR in that, operations, programming, sales, marketing, and ticketing, and food and beverage. But what we really want to emphasize, if you assume that we have that, then the four things we really want to talk to you about is that we plan to bring more concerts and attractions to the Heartland Event Center. We're going to transform the food and beverage service there. We are very good at what we do with food service, and we make that a stellar part of all of our venues. We are, like I said, totally employee-owned, and so you have a different type of engagement from our staff, our full-time staff that be working there, and we do bring amazing results. So it starts with entertainment programming. We like to say nobody comes to an empty building. There's got to be an event there. We centralize our programming. We know what a good offer is for a band. We don't pay too much. We have a constant contact with agents, promoters, producers of these shows. We attend the usual booking conferences. AIBA, the International Entertainment Buyers Association, just wrapped up today in Nashville. We had people down there, had a big dinner for promoters that we work with on, I think, Sunday night. So those are the kinds of things we do. We do special trips with our venue location managers to places like Nashville, Los Angeles, to some degree, New York City. And we have national contracts with the likes of Ticketmaster that'll bring you, like in the case of Ticketmaster, 40% of every service fee that is paid for a ticket at the Heartland Event Center. You do that really well. Here again, these are kind of small, but we just went back and looked over our shoulder at the events we've had in the last, I don't know, 18 months or so that we're putting in. And don't get too excited, we have bigger venues and bigger communities, so, you know, the likes of Elton John and some of these are probably a little overreach if we're talking about bringing them here, but certainly most of those would be able to play here. Here again, these are kind of small, but we just went back and looked over our shoulder at the events we've had in the last, I don't know, 18 months or so that we're putting in. And don't get too excited, we have bigger venues and bigger communities, so, you know, the likes of Elton John and some of these are probably a little overreach if we're talking about bringing them here, but certainly most of those would be able to play here. In terms of that food and beverage component, we're going to invest $300,000 in upgrading the food and beverage component at the event center to create more rapid service kiosks. Nobody wants to leave an event if they're going to have to stand in line forever, so we, we make sure we cut that back. We're using new technology to be able to do that in almost instantaneous time. We'll bring in state-of-the-art digital menu boards that are actually tied to the sales technology of our point-of-sale systems. We have a premium food presentation, so the food looks nice, particularly for catered types of events, or we'll put in more menu events, more venue items, rather, in the suites in the arena. We expect to be able to do catering for 500 to 1,000 with the facilities that are there. They'll take some additional equipment, and we expend, we'll be able to extend service outdoors on certain occasions. So we have a philosophy within that employee ownership, train me, then trust me. So we do cross-training. So somebody that might be sweeping the floor, setting up chairs in the morning, might be cooking in the back room for the concession stand at night, and might help tear down the stage at the end of the night. We have a community service engagement that we preach all the time, all of our managers, our members of various service clubs, local community groups. We try to use community groups in our concession stands, so that they're there, they're earning money for their organizations, that taking the 10% or 15% that would normally get paid to those people. We believe in people first, in the way we treat people, not only our customers, but also our staff, and we empower our employees to solve problems. The, Tom and I aren't the people that greet you at the door. The people that greet you at the door are there for maybe three or four hours, five times a month, right? But we want them to be empowered to be able to solve a problem, to leave someplace and go to another place to be able to solve a customer's problem. And within all that, we practice accountability with support, not only for our employees, but for ourselves. So we'll prepare an annual budget. Every month, we'll provide a report that shows how we're doing actual against budget, and we'll give you a year-end report at the end of the year to show you how we did. And a lot of that year-end report will talk about those impacts, attendance, programs, financial and economic impact to the community. So more concerts and attractions, a lot of promoted events. Venue Works, we have our own internal promotions company. We promote dozens and dozens of concerts and comedians across the country. Improved net revenue, $300,000 investment from us. We actually think we can take food and beverage revenues to $2 million a year very fast. Seamless transition. We were walking the building today. There's a lot to be done in the short, less than three months we have before it'll actually be handed off to the city, so we'll be working hard with teams coming in, teams of our employees from other accounts, to start to get that done. I would, just the same, I would beg for a little bit of patience as we try to accomplish that, so we don't have a lot of time. And total employee engagement, I can't stress that enough. We're only as good as our, as the people of our colleagues can be. So that's it. We appreciate the opportunity to serve you. I'm here to answer any questions, or Tom and I can stick around afterward if you want to ask us questions individually, so.
Mr. Richter, you've had experience at the Heartland Event Center before, haven't you?
No. Yes, if I've had.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Slide over, slide over to the microphones.
All right. Yeah, I've been down here on several occasions for the National Hereford Junior Livestock Show, not this one this past summer, but probably four or five years ago. I was at another junior show, I can't remember when, but to come down, because the reputation of Grand Island in that world is very stellar. You're known as one of the nicest, cleanest, newest facilities in the country, and people like coming here, and that's why I came down, because we're, we hosted the National Junior Charley Show and Semitol Shows in a facility that I managed, and now I'm in a new role as a Regional Vice President. I will oversee this account, and what my job is, I'm the liaison between our corporate office and our team in Grand Island, and I help them get the tools they'll need to do their jobs the best they can, and help them stand a little taller and have people behind them, supporting them. Steve mentioned that we'll have teams coming in during this transition time to get this account up and running, and that's one of the benefits of a private management company, that we have 3,000 employees, that we have a team, I can't remember what we call them, but of 25 to 30 people that volunteer each year to help in cases like this, to come and help with accounts. Or if we have an account where we have a big event that we need extra chefs or operations people, they're, they'll mobilize and come and help. And so that'll be at your service here soon.
Pride ourselves on being the livestock show capital of Nebraska. Would you agree?
You've done a great job doing that. It's unbelievable. I mean, I've been to a lot of facilities in the country, and there's none that are better.
Good to hear.
We hear of some coming maybe down the road, but we will pride ourselves in helping out as much as we can with those, those events and all the events at Foner Park.
I appreciate all your kind words about your experience here, and thank you for your presentation. And now former Mayor Jay Vaverechek would like to speak.
Thank you, Mayor Steele, and once again, congratulations on all the great work. Your leadership provides our community, and when I was here last time, I'm just amazed at the progress that's occurring. And with that, I have mixed emotions about the proposal before you tonight, and I'm not convinced this is exactly the right thing to do tonight for a number of reasons. First, I look at this decision, and for some of you that may not know me, I invested a lot of time, energy, and a number of different things at Heartland Event Center. I, Gary Rosakram, Brian Hamilton, and a number of different peoples, Steve Hornaday, Dave Beliles, we lofted the idea of a civic center some 25 years ago, and worked with the city at that time to go ahead and potentially pass a one-and-a-half-cent sales tax that we create the civic center. And as some of you know, including Chuck, Mr. Hossi, who was here at that time, they separated that ballot measure and had two different votes occur on that, and the civic center was driven with a half-cent sales tax. It failed. Number of reasons why. We then came back and led a petition effort where we thought, well, if we went ahead and had a grassroots effort, maybe that would go ahead and convince the voters to support that. It failed again. And then I'm just reminded Hugh Minor passed away, longtime CEO of Foner Park. He, along with Brian Hamilton, actually then composed a campaign where the civic center, or Heartland Event Center, is largely funded by private contributions, not city. But the city portion evolved around a lodging tax, a city lodging tax that's currently in place. And where I'm going with this is a number of different things. I don't really know if there's been a widespread community discussion yet about what is the best way to manage the civic center, the Heartland Event Center. And I'd also like to acknowledge Foner Park's leadership for the last 20 years has done an absolutely great job with all the different things that that center has. We leveraged it to recruit the State Fair. It's now the site of many different events, many of which will be ongoing regardless of this firm is selected for a management or not. If you want more concerts, and believe me, I can go through a list of all the different concerts that I've been involved in presenting, and we're presenting one in three weeks from now with Chris Jansen, a country music star, and I don't know if any of you are aware of that, but once again, anyone can go ahead and book a concert, but let me just tell you, more times than not, they're not successful. They don't, they don't pan out, and somebody has to write a check. Everyone gets a check, except maybe the promoter. Some of them are successful, but if you want concerts, you can go ahead and book that with a number of different associations, even with the current management agreement. And when I look at the, an excellent presentation, by the way, from these gentlemen on what they can provide, and when I look at that, I understand this is a recommendation of a request for proposals to go ahead and negotiate a finalized contract, correct? So consequently, if this goes forward, there will be negotiations, and ultimately, a contract would come back to this council to approve. Is that right? It's not right. Okay. Then I would subject that I think people need to know what the terms of the contract are, termination, a number of different things, but also when you look at the implied opportunity to be the recipient of over $500,000 a year in city lodging tax revenues, that's really a separate policy-making decision that you all have not made to terminate, to change, and to be presumptuous and say that is an amount of money that would go ahead and go to anyone. Well, if you look at the resolution, I was here in May of 2000 when Ken Gannott was mayor, it notes that that city logic tax of 2% goes to Foner Park for an agricultural exhibition center. Now, it could be construed that that exists today by virtue of all the different facilities that Foner Park has. So I'm just being straightforward and saying, hey, if this is a deal breaker, then I think the people, and you all ought to make a decision, is lodging tax going to be a part of this or not? And that may be important to these gentlemen and their employees, and they may say, hey, if it's not, we're not going to be a part of it. I don't know. When I go down the list of these things, and I know you've got on, in front of you, a fee structure. Now, when I look at the fee structure, we've outs, the city's outsourced golf, and yet you approve fees. It's outsourced the Heartland Public Shooting Park, and yet you approve fees. If this is a city facility managed with an outsourced company, then indeed, is booking, the event center, and all the different things, part of the city's fee structure? I mean, you just go on and on. Once again, I look at this as an iceberg where you're seeing a part of it, but there's a lot of things underneath the water that you may not be aware of until you stop to think. What about stakeholders? Have they been involved with this awareness? State Fair, key. Brand-new casino, you go right down the list. Gilka. And when I say Gilka, Grand Island Livestock Complex Authority, which is largely the facilities for the animals and so forth that you just remarked about, fantastic facility. If anyone was there a few weeks ago to see the Exarban Show, it's unbelievable, and it's those type of events that really promote more overnight stays, really more than a concert. So in some respects, when you talk about the lodging tax, Grand Island Livestock Complex Authority and marketing may be also a potential entity that could go ahead and leverage those dollars for more overnight stays than maybe what would go as a subsidy for $8 million that's indicated on the pro forma. And I don't know, and I know Chris Kethulek's here, the current CEO of Foner, I don't know what the event center's doing, if it's doing 3 million, or 8, or what, but $8 million and $1.3 million in food and beverage, I mean, if that's achievable, then also I bring up this. I don't know if there's been a conscious decision, so I'm just asking, has the council determined
that the city shouldn't operate the facility itself?
or get behind those events, somebody's going to be writing a check. And if the city's going to be writing a check, well, then I think city ownership of a city asset and city management makes some sense. You can always outsource it. So in conclusion, I would just ask, and of course, the administration's done a great job of trying to put together, in my estimation, a request for proposal of a very unique entity within our city. And on your council packet, just like every other agenda topic, it says you have the opportunity to make a motion to approve, deny, refer to a committee, or postpone. And I just think a community-wide discussion of this, of all the different stakeholders and all the different things, makes sense to postpone this decision, because I don't know what we have to gain by making this decision tonight.
Well, the transfer of the Heartland Events Center into city ownership in December has been on the council's radar for many months. And I don't, I don't purport to speak for any individual council members, but none have ever expressed an interest in the city managing it. And, you know, we had two responses to the request for proposals. Foner Park did not submit a response. You brought up a lot of things. I don't know, Mrs. Fisk, are you able to respond to some of those items? Or Mrs. McAlune?
Yeah, I can certainly answer some of your questions about the structure of the contract. The contract, the terms are actually included. The compensation terms are included in the packet. That's all laid out in the proposal from VenueWorks. The contract just simply has specific terms and conditions, which we actually included in the RFP, and there were no exceptions or requests for changes from VenueWorks to our terms and conditions. The compensation will be a monthly management fee of $6,000, plus commissions earned on their performance. So their food and beverage sales, and their booking and ticket sales. Plus addition, we'll put revenue from those ticket sales and fees into the event. Our goal and our requirement in the RFP was that the proposals show how the venue can become self-supporting as compared to wholly subsidized by the city. So the food and beverage tax, or I'm sorry, the hotel lodging tax, which actually expires at the end of 2025, and will need to be renewed by the city council if it's renewed, that funding is there available as a backstop, is how we presented it in the RFP. It's been paid to Foner, who I agree has done a fabulous job of managing the facility over the last 20 years. But as the mayor noted, they chose not to respond to the RFP. So they're, I think they're ready to focus on what they do really, really well, which is horse racing and management of the entire Foner Park campus. They are a key partner in the continued management and operation. And I have to call out Chris Kattulak, because he has spent multiple hours with us talking about how to do a successful transition to a new management company, including about three hours this afternoon, meeting with VenueWorks and showing them all of the backside of the Heartland Events Center, so that we can have a positive transition. The timing of this contract award is intended to give Foner Park and VenueWorks the last quarter of the year to work together and facilitate that transition of all that knowledge that people like Diane Willey have, and make sure that VenueWorks on January 1 can take off and be a success, building on the success that Foner Park Expo and Event Center has experienced. So it's really just the next phase of management and operation of the event center, to bring more people to Grand Island, and increase not just the events and concerts available to our residents, but really generate tourism for the community, and bring all those people into Grand Island as compared to sending them off to somewhere else.
Well, I couldn't agree more about promoting Grand Island. And that's what I've tried to do in the last number of different concerts over the last 20 years, and I won't go list them all. But there were just some things I just felt needed to be addressed publicly. And indeed, it's an important foundation of our community, no question about it. And also, when I looked at the resolution, I couldn't understand like why it's dated October 1, and we're having this discussion on October 8. So it's like, is it a foregone conclusion that it's already been approved, or what? But the other thing is, when you enter into a negotiations from a request for proposals, because normally, the RFPs are, are, once it goes to council, seemingly are typically approved based on all those specifications and certified, and this is not the case. So that's why I wanted to bring that forward.
Just to clarify on those two items. One, it is the case that the contract is based on the RFP. The RFP will actually be incorporated into the contract. And then, the timing of October 1, we simply, due to scheduling as city staff, and due to conferences that both myself, Assistant City Administrator Brown, and City Attorney Fisk were attending in September, weren't able to get it on the agenda during September. But we know that VenueWorks has already been boots on the ground, working on the transition with us. So we're recognizing the fact that they already started working for us in good faith reliance that we would go forward and make this recommendation.
And once again, I appreciate your indulgence in allowing me to speak, Mayor Steele and council. Then, but the contract itself, well, is a document that the city council will not approve?
The city council is approving the award of the contract tonight with the resolution, should they choose to approve it. The compensation terms of the contract and the actual term, it's a five-year term, that was, that was all included in the RFP. It's simply a matter of finalizing the legal document that will be executed. That is in near-final form, but none of the substantive terms will be different than what was included in the RFP.
So what happens on the lodging tax?
The lodging tax is not promised to VenueWorks forever. The lodging tax is available. Again, like I stated, it expires next year, at the end of December of '25. So if the city council chooses not to renew that lodging tax, then it would no longer be available. But our contract for five years does require the city to assist VenueWorks, just like we do with our Jack Rabbit Run contract, if they don't generate enough revenue to cover expenses. But based on their pro formas and the references we checked, we have every expectation that they will be able to do that.
So the agreement would commence potentially, if council approved it January 1, the lodging, is that correct?
No, the agreement would commence October 1. There will be a transition period
Right.
where VenueWorks will be paid the $6,000 a month in management fee, to enable them to have their staff work with Foner Park on transitioning. We've, we're working with Foner Park on also making sure that they're compensated for events that they have booked that will be held after December 31. So we're working very closely with Foner Park to make sure that this is a positive transition, and that they're fairly compensated for the work that they're doing for the city.
Thank you, Laura. Thank you, Mayor Steele. Maybe if council has questions, I'll propose so. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Council members, is there a motion regarding Resolution 10A? Mr. Stelt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move for approval.
Thank you. Mr. Nickerson?
Second to motion.
Thank you. Discussion. Mr. Hawsey?
Thank you, Mayor. Some of my concerns are the same ones that Mayor Vaverechek has talked about. My wife Joyce was on the council when they approved the Heartland Events Center 20 years ago. And so we know about what the conversations were in the community 20 years ago. For the past 20 years, Foner Park has operated the Heartland Events Center, and used the funds that were provided by the county and the city, and there was public investment. I know that Joyce and I bought a seat, you know, in the Heartland Events Center. And the lodging tax. I wanted to thank Chris Kattulak and his staff for their due diligence in managing it for over this time, and including his predecessor, Hugh Miner. He was a good friend of mine as well. But during this time, the city has had a liaison, a council member, on the Heartland Events Center board. And so at one time, it was Mayor Steele, and it's been Mike Pollock served on it. I've served on it most recently. And I'm sure there's others that I didn't include. But, so we had a process for 20 years, and essentially, it wasn't in our budget. You know, other than the lodging tax that's going out, that went to the Heartland Events Center, we didn't have any financial risk from year to year. We, you know, could have paid for other things, but we, you know, it's one of those, is we were out of the financial risk business. In reading all of the pages, and I read them more than once, that are in the packet, this is like the first time I've seen what we're talking about. So I think this management agreement in front of us tonight changes everything. It changes what we have done for the last 20 years, and it goes to this contract, which is for five years, and two more five-year renewal terms within there. You know, so literally, you're looking at the next 15 years. I think the city's financial risk just increased significantly. You know, as I read all of the documents, you know, I, this is, my comments are not regarding VenueWorks, so this really isn't about them or any criticism of them. I just think the city's financial risk just went up when I read it. I think the city will now manage the facility through VenueWorks, and we're going to pay VenueWorks in their projections of $225,463 was their, what they have as their fee, their management fee in the first year. They did a five-year pro forma in here. It's on page 115 in the packet. But again, what we're going to do is we're going to pay somebody $225,000 a year to manage it. And that's all of the commission stuff that Laura talked about. But part of this to me is, I read here where the city has to approve the security team. You know, this is about, you know, and somewhat, for me, it's about control. It's like, it's like, does the city want to pick the events? Does the city want to manage the lodging tax? It's about who controls it. Well, right now, it's been run very efficiently by Foner Park and by Chris and his team. This agreement says, you know, the city will have to be paying for all capital, equipment, capital leases, and those kind of things. And in their pro forma, the $500,000 lodging tax is in every other five years. It's in their pro forma that they get the money. This thing, and even in their year one with that, it's a break even. I think it was maybe $53 in their own pro forma in here. Only in year five does it actually get to a break even without the lodging tax. And like every proposal that I've read, I've looked at these pro formas, I think there's a lot of hype in the numbers. You know, for example, when I looked at the events that they were going to have, they were going to have $155,000, some people attend an event in the Heartland Events Center in a year. I don't know if $150,000 is the right number. But I did go through, and I took the ones that had no revenue, which I'm assuming those weren't ticket sales, those were like Five Points Bank having a luncheon or something, a community event. So I took all those out, and it was still $105,000 ticket sale events. So I'm trying to think, how many unique customers does the Heartland Events Center have? Is there 10,000 people in Grand Island and the surrounding community that go to events? Not everybody goes to these events here. Is there 20,000? I don't know how many there are, because that's a question I have. If there's 10,000, well, that would mean that I'd have to go to 10 events a year. Well, that's not realistic. I go to a lot of events, and Chris probably knows, I'm probably one of the ones who goes to most of the events. But maybe we would hit 10 in a year. But if it's, you know, again, I'm not sure how many you go. If it's 20,000 unique customers go to the event center in our region, that's, you got, everyone's got to go to five a year. And that doesn't sound, it just somehow, it doesn't sound like it's doable. It might be, you know, I might just have been in the dark all these time, but it's one of those, I think there's a little pie in the sky. There's a little blue sky in the numbers. And so if they can do it, more power to them. I'm not going to stand in their way. But the problem that Mayor Vaverechek brought up, and when I served as the liaison with the Heartland Events Center board, every one of the concerts that they showed on their, in their proposal, every one of them made a profit. And I absolutely know, they don't all make a profit. And as Mayor Vaverechek spoke to, he knows too, probably, which ones make a profit and which one doesn't, because he's probably had to write a check once or twice. And we appreciate everything that Mayor Vaverechek has done to bring concerts here. But that's the financial risk I'm talking about, is you can bring more concerts, but if it doesn't, if you get down to the end, and it doesn't make any money, it's taxpayers' money. And that's where, I'll go back to when Joyce was on the council, and we had these conversations about, why did the council approve it? Because the council approved the Heartland Events Center. One of the things that was repeated to her, she didn't, they didn't want, the taxpayers didn't want the city to take over, and all of a sudden, the responsibility of having a concert that doesn't pay, or having a lot of concerts that doesn't pay, they didn't want it to fall back on the taxpayer. And that's exactly what we're doing with this contract. I wish them success, for sure. But I don't like the complete change of, from going this direction to going a different direction. And one of the reasons that I don't like it, because the council didn't get, we haven't been in any, any meeting where we discussed the change of directions from what we've done for 20 years. I've sat on the, as a liaison for the Heartland Events Center board, and we've talked about this for the last four or five years. Because Mr. Brown, the CFO for the city, he could have paid off this December 15 note five years ago. So it could have been paid off years ago. We have the financial authority or ability to do it. We just chose not to. We just chose to let it go to this point. But for all the discussions that happened over the last five years, when I'm on the Heartland Events Center board and on the city council, this proposal has never been through my ears until I'm reading it on the paper tonight. When they had a review committee for the RFP, not one council member was on the review committee, that I know of. So the council's input, and when we're, we're the governing body, and people talk to council members all the time in this community, and they talk to me as well, and they're like, well, why did you do that? And quite frankly, I'm just sitting here rubber-stamping something. I didn't get involved in anything. Nobody asked my opinion. Nobody said, we want to change directions. I did read the RFP before, so I saw where they were going, but I don't know who was going to respond. And so I don't know what the responses were going to look like. But now I do. I'm going to vote no, because I don't think this is the right thing to do, and I don't really want to shift the financial risk to taxpayers today, particularly given the fact that we haven't had that community conversation. We haven't had a council conversation that I've been a part of. You know, and so I'm just, I don't know what the right answer is at this point, but I'm not comfortable enough to say yes, because as soon as I say yes tonight, it's 20 years of VenueWorks, or 15 years, anyway, even if we get five-year looks at it. I'm just not convinced that this is what we need to do. It may be. But I don't know enough. Prior to tonight, unfortunately, I was disappointed that I didn't have a participated role in even talking about what this looks like tonight.
Mrs. Fisk?
I just wanted to make sure a couple of things are clear for council. One of them is the reality that keeping doing things the way we've always done them is literally, legally, not an option. When the facility was bonded, the Heartland Events Center...
A group that manages it now was created by the bond, and that management agreement and that entity dissolve upon making the final payment to the bond. So we do not have an option to continue doing what we're doing. Our choices really are engage in a management agreement, or let this facility sit dark and empty. So I just want to make sure that that's really clear, that those, keeping doing what we're doing just is not one of the available options for council. The actual contract itself, I'll tell you, is actually ready now. We had, we'd had delays on the city's end in getting it finalized with VenueWorks before the council packet went out, and wanted to make sure there were no final fine-tunings that needed to be made based on their tour today. But if you have particular questions about that contract and what that will look like, as soon as we get your blessing, I can answer those. I can tell you that it includes robust financial checkups, monthly financial accounting, and annual committee-based review of their performance for some of those commissions, that includes some of those very valuable stakeholder opinions that you've talked about. some of those very valuable stakeholder opinions that you've talked about, like their relationship with community stakeholders, the ability to deliver on those financials. So they have a lot of skin in the game, and we have a lot of exit points at which we can, you know, I mean, frankly, they were very generous in their negotiation termination-wise. Frankly, we can just decide on a Tuesday, this isn't great, and they've been pretty generous about knowing that they've got to deliver on the results if they want to keep it going. So we would have the option if, if they turned out, they never ran anything, to exit at pretty regular intervals, and they have some pretty steep reporting obligations to keep health checking with you on a very regular basis, to make sure it's all successful. So we've negotiated a very protective contract to the extent we can, and the reality is, those financial risks, I mean, they're real. I mean, you're not wrong, they're very real. They're ours whether we want them or not. All 25 years of deferred maintenance is ours whether we have ticket sale revenue to pay for those expenses or not. I mean, that financial risk by virtue of that bond is the city's effective, that final bond payment. There's no way for us to avoid that risk. All we can do is try to contract and manage and reduce that risk best we can.
Can you give us an estimate of the deferred maintenance that we're looking at?
I mean, you've got a 25-year-old roof and a 25-year-old-
16 and a half million.
Or 16, yeah.
16 and a half million?
Yeah.
So that's our risk. Okay.
And then I also want to add, Councilmember Hossi, who had indicated 225,000 approximately is in their pro forma for what the potential cost to the city would be above and beyond that 6,000 a month flat fee.
That was their fee.
Yes, that's in, that's in their, that's in their proposal as a pro forma of, if they booked the facility, the way that they planned to book it, they would receive a fee of approximately 225,000. What the city has been paying over the past 20 years has actually been approximately a million dollars a year. Our risk has been, we paid about the $500,000 debt service. It varied each year, but generally a fixed debt service amount of 500,000 that we paid. In addition, we provided the lodging tax rather than it going to the debt service payments. The lodging tax payment was instead transitioned as a direct subsidy support of the Event Center to the amount of about 500,000 dollars a year. I think lately, it's been trending about 550,000. But so the city is going to come down from that total million-dollar outlay a year to hopefully just 225,000 a year. And that's if they perform as promised. Really, our risk is 6,000 a month. That's the amount that we have to pay. And then obviously, putting into operations and, or excuse me, the capital improvements, that's 16 and a half million in deferred maintenance. We know that there are many, many, there has been what I would say, careful management of the facility by Foner Park Expo and Events Center, based on the fact that they really haven't done much more than been able to break even each year. So there really hasn't been funding in order to put into a capital account, and we've been paying the debt service on the original construction. So we know that going forward, and part of their proposal, is to put funding into a capital improvement fund in order to pay for the improvements that we know are going to have to be made. The warranty on the roof expired two years ago, things like that. The HVAC system, these are all original pieces of equipment that are close to the end of their useful life. So we do know that there are additional capital improvements that are going to have to be made, but what we have done is we've reduced our operating risk with this proposal. And just to point out, we did discuss this contract and the fact that it was coming up, that we were going to have to make a decision. It was one of the first things that was given to me to work on when I arrived at the city two years ago, in that we were going to have to take ownership come December 15 of this year, when the debt service is paid off, under the terms of the financing contract. So, and we discussed it, I discussed it with council at the council retreat, the last council retreat, which I know you were unable to attend. So we've tried to keep the council informed. Just so you know, the people that sat on the selection committee that evaluated the two responses that we got, we had Cindy Johnson as a representative of the state fair, and we had Brad Melama as a representative of Gilka and the Convention and Visitors Bureau, because obviously, together with Foner, they are huge partners with the city on all of the events that go on, on the Foner Park campus.
Mr. Hossi, your light's still on. Are you wishing to speak again?
No, I've shut my mic off.
Thank you. Mr. Nickerson?
First of all, I want to thank Kerry for clarification on a lot of things. The exits are going to be very important in a contract like this, and I think it's important that you let us know that. To Mr. Vavichek, who always brings excellent points and a thought process, and this was your baby, one of the visions that you've had over the many years, and you've seen this come to fruition, this among many others. And we've known this day was coming, as we've already said. We knew this day was coming, and it's already here. It's here within a matter of a couple of months. And so we know that things had to have been happening behind the scenes, and this is what was happening behind the scenes. The facts of the matter are the RFP went out, only two responses. Foner Park chose not to. I think, I can't speak for Chris, but I'm going to guess they probably don't want the hassle. I would say the city probably doesn't want the hassle. And I would think that people that are good at what they do are probably logical choices to take over a venue such as this. I know nothing about VenueWorks, other than what I've read over this last few days, but there are questions, I think, that come to mind when we're talking about risks. And one of them would be, I just want to say, first of all, people like to be entertained. I'm not one of those people. I don't care about the concerts, I don't care, but there are people that love that stuff, and they will pay top dollar to go see whoever and whatever. But Mitch Nickerson just doesn't do that. He loves free tickets to the state fair every chance he gets to go see a concert, because he would never see a concert there. But there are people who want to be entertained. What disappoints me, though, knowing that people want to be entertained, is when there are concerts scheduled at the state fair, how many of them are not sold out. That surprises me in a venue that we have here. My question to VenueWorks, I guess, is going to be, and I don't understand all of this in detail, other than it sounds like we may be at risk if ticket sales don't pan out. But I'd just like to ask the VenueWorks reps, what is your history on most of the concerts you see? Are they break even? Do you lose a little bit? How's that work overall, in your experience of what you guys have seen?
Yes, please. We do a great deal of analytics in deciding what we're going to promote. And when I said that VenueWorks does promote, we put our money at risk. And we do that because sometimes you don't want to. We would expect that there would be an administrative staff or administrative group that would say, if we come to you and we want you to risk money on an event, you have to sign off yes or no. That will come with a risk assessment that says, this is what we're going to charge for tickets, this is what the break even is, we have to sell 2,000 tickets in order to break even, we got to sell 1,500 tickets in order to break even. When that happens, we're taking the risk with you. And sometimes, we'll take all the risk. And yeah, not every event breaks even. I mean, we've had to eat some big ones over the years. Neil Diamond, I'll give you an example. Neil Diamond, we were promoting a concert, Neil Diamond, he just, a huge facility that we ran at the time, and you just knew you were going to sell out with Neil Diamond, except it was in October of 2008. What was going on in 2008? The audience for Neil Diamond were watching their 401Ks melt in front of their eyes. We didn't sell enough tickets. We had a $250,000 loss that night. We paid the bill, not the facility. So, yeah, and by the way, the facility gets all the revenue, all right? We're getting a commission, we're getting a fee, all the revenues go to the facility, go to the city. All the expenses go to the city, including our fee, but by the time we earn that 200-some thousand dollars, you've sold $2 million worth of concessions. So are numbers aggressive? You're damn right, they got to be aggressive. We're not going to sit here and say it's going to be business as usual. We're going to bring you more stuff. And when we say shows, that's shorthand for comedians, family shows, ones that I can never remember. And I can't, I tell our guys, for God's sake, if I've ever heard of the act, don't book it, because nobody will come. So it's, it's going to be a wide range of events, it isn't just concerts. And we hope that we have something for everybody eventually through the years, so that we do get all 53,000 residents of Grand Island that want to come out, with the kids, with the grandmas and grandpas, and see a show eventually. And in doing that, we realize we've got to be good partners with the other stakeholders that work on the campus, on not programming over the top of them, on not programming against something else. And we've got to support all those perennial events that come, the athletic events and the other events that are there every year. And we got to make them, and there's always, by the way, there's always somebody, Tom mentioned that there are buildings being planned in other venues to try to steal your thunder, you know? I mean, you are, you are as good as your last event and your experience for that event planner. And so it's up to us to make sure that people, the event planners have a good time, those fans come here and they have a good time, and we wow them and they want to come back the next time.
So all the fees and all the expenses flow to the city, so the city has real-time information on how you're doing?
Absolutely. And also, you approve the budget. The budget will include the fees. Now, we have to have some latitude in order to be able to negotiate fees and so forth. But I mean, we're not going to go off, you're not leasing the building to us where we get control of it. We're going to report every month against that budget and that business plan that you approved.
Well, I appreciate your comments, because I think it's important, you want a successful venue. You want a successful venue, we want a successful venue. I'm impressed with your willingness to invest 300,000 into the food court. I think when I look at your operation, what I see, obviously, are experts in their field that do this every day, and that's the kind of people you want. I see you bringing the Heartland Events Center to the next level, is what I'm really seeing. And you know, we don't want to operate things the way we always have. As Kerry said, legally, it's all, it all goes away anyway, so we have to rethink what we're doing. It's probably a good idea to rethink what you're doing in the 21st century. The kiosks are very common nowadays. Going to total credit is very common nowadays with some places. So it seems to be a good fit. I don't see any reason why we would not. And what makes me feel better, as we, I hope we take this step tonight forward, to see kind of the new improved Heartland Events Center, and what we can draw to Grand Island with the variety, a vision of what you've seen, and really what this community is going to want, and who knows what that is? Because we know some things haven't been successful through the state fair. We know the community didn't want that, nor did everybody who comes to the state fair. But there are those people that are going to appeal to this group. I don't know who they are. That's your expertise, and that's whatever research you do to find out, who are those people that will draw those crowds? That's what I would be counting on, and that all of us would be counting on you to do for us. So I think the expertise that you bring is what's selling me on this. Our risk obviously is there, but is, it's now our baby. And I appreciate what Mayor Vavichek and others were able to bring, and start, and grow, and now I think we've got to take that to the next level, and that's what I would be counting on you all to do. So thank you.
Mr. Sheard?
Thank you. I have so many notes, I'm going to try to be organized, but they're scribbled everywhere. I'm going to start to my left. I appreciate a lot of what Chuck said, both about, this is not against you, because your presentation, it's a lot of flash, I like it. I like seeing that the names you've brought, I like seeing you take risk, fantastic. I like seeing the investments in our facility. I have some questions for you, but I want to address what Chuck said. I feel his frustration. We did talk about this at a retreat, but it's been silent for a while. I haven't had a conversation that we're allowed to legally have. I don't know the rules enough to know why this wasn't a study session at some time to talk about where we are in the process, to get some of that feedback. I agree with Jay that some of this is, we've had 20 years, and then boom, it's here. I've been on council for two years. I feel like this is one of those things we should have been having more conversations about. That said, I think we got at least one good RFP returned. That I'm going, I'm going to support this, I'll skip to the end, I'm going to support this. I would just like to see us have more of an opportunity on the long term, to have deeper conversations and input going forward on a project of this scale. This is so crucial and so big for our community. I'm happy with where I think we're going to go, but I feel Chuck's frustration on this. He said enough, I don't need to repeat everything he said, so now I have some questions for y'all.
If they're hard questions, he'll answer.
I don't think they're hard, I just hope they're things that have been discussed. It's been talked about that you're going to be on the Foner Park ground, and I just want to know your thoughts on sharing the facility, the ground, with Foner Park that's been there forever. The name of the place is Foner Park, first and foremost. But the state fair is there, they've traditionally had that land for two months out of the year. Gilka has many great things happening there. There's a casino popping up, not sure if, you know, that's been part of the conversations. So the questions I have is just, you know, talk to us about how you plan to work with those groups specifically on things that have always been happening, like the state fair, the Foner, you know, the race season. You know, parking is a question I have for you, you know, with a casino coming, and if you're going to have more shows more often, like you say, is parking an issue you're worried about? Just tell us about your plans for partnering with the other folks there.
Well, that partnering has to happen for every successful venue. So when you go to a venue in another town, you may not realize how many stakeholders really have a hand in making all that work. I'll try to give you some examples. We run a theater, a 2,700-seat theater, a very big theater, on the campus of Iowa State University. Now, it's across the parking lot from a 60,000-seat stadium, and it's across the courtyard the other direction from a 15,000-seat basketball arena. And Iowa State does do fairly well in those sports, and it fills up all the parking. We got to be careful, and then there's a conference center there, too. So we're very careful and very aware of parking, of scheduling. We share information minute by minute sometimes, to be sure we're not scheduling over somebody. I mean, it's unreal, as hard as it is to believe, I mean, you wouldn't believe how late even a Big 12 football schedule gets set. So we're used to doing that. In terms of having community partners, it's incredibly important that we do that, wherever we go. In, trying to think of a good, in Dodge City, where we run the 4,500-seat United Wireless Center, we have a hotel and a casino attached to that arena. And we've brought back other events and instilled new activity there, where we've got something going all the time. And, but again, it's got to, you've got to take into account those other stakeholders that are working in the building. We work very closely with convention visitor bureaus in all of our communities. They bring back the leads, or we go with them to pitch, to try to get an event, and there's a lot of competition for that. Here, there's a lot of competition for those, the agricultural livestock events, the equine events, and we pride ourselves as being part of that. We don't just stand back and wait for them to come. When we put together the proposal for the building, it's always with the idea of what's best for the community. And if that means we have to come back to the city to say, you know what, in order to get this, give me an example, this-
Livestock.
Livestock show, yeah, yeah. I mean, and by the way, he didn't, he's, Tom, how long were you in rodeo, professional rodeo?
A long time.
A long time. He was a rodeo coach at South Dakota State University. He was hosting in 2020, when every other venue was closing, and you couldn't hardly slip an envelope- an envelope under the door because of COVID, he successfully hosted, not one, not two, but three, back-to-back-to-back national livestock shows. One of which was supposed to be here.
Yeah.
And was canceled.
The single show.
And he did it at a much smaller facility and made it work. I'll give you another example. We were on, at the Iowa State Center, this is back at the campus of Iowa State, years ago, we had a chance to do Eric Clapton. Eric Clapton is somebody you don't want to say no to, but the Iowa State Education Association had their conference at that time, and they had a half a day left with a smaller group, only about half the population of their group, would be that last day. So, we figured out a way to put a curtain down the middle of the arena, they had their event on one side, and on the other side, we started loading in Clapton's stage and gear and everything earlier than usual. And then, when they started on their side of the curtain, bam, we stopped, everything stopped. Come to their coffee break in the morning, they're going like crazy on the other side of the curtain, and all the education people are up on the concourse looking to see what's happening on the other side of the curtain. Of course, we had to give some discounts for tickets and everything, but, I mean, we made it work. We had two big events in the same day. That's how you do it. You accommodate, you work together, and you've probably got better examples.
Well, it's critical that all the groups work together, obviously, to make everything seamless and run well. We've already started that process with Chris and his team, and it's going to be critical, the communication going forward with our team in Grand Island, if you go forward with us. And I have all the confidence in the world that that'll all work together, because ultimately, we all have the best interest of Grand Island. And if we do that, we'll make things work. And I'm excited for not only VenueWorks, the city council, but the community of Grand Island, to have this opportunity to come here and help take it to another level, from where Chris and his team have gotten us to today. And I think there's a bright future.
Do we have a standing agreement, I don't know if it's with you guys or the city, with the fair having the facility, that's maintained through this?
Oh, yeah, yes.
Okay.
The RFP required any submittals to, it actually gave them notice to the contract that we have with the state fair and with Foner Park.
Okay.
For turning over both the fieldhouse and the event center, and shutting down those operations.
Okay. I just wanted to confirm that.
There's one more question, or part of your question, the parking, parking will be a concern for some events. We've talked about that today in our meetings, but there are great problems to have, that you're worrying about parking. But we feel like we can come up with plans that'll help alleviate that on occasion. We're not talking every event, we think there's going to be problems, but there's a few that there, where multiple things are going on, that parking is going to be a concern, but we'll figure out a way to work through it.
Okay. Little thing here, you mentioned Ticketmaster in your proposal. Are you exclusive with Ticketmaster?
No, we have ETICs in some places. Tessatira is an arts ticketing company. We have Audience View in another account.
Okay.
We have the best deal with Ticketmaster.
Okay. I just know that Foner and the state fair use ETICs.
I know ETICs, yeah.
So, I didn't know if that would be usable, if there's any issues with that.
No, we'll get into that, yeah. What we're looking for, besides having a good customer experience with buying a ticket, we also want to be sure that we have the depth of analytics and marketing capability. And in our experience, Ticketmaster is unsurpassed, and that, unsurpassed in their reporting capabilities.
Another thing that I, just, forgive me if it was in the packet, it was 100 pages long, so I might have missed some of these details. I know there are Skybox booths and things like that, that different private entities have at the event center.
And you said they have what?
There's booths, there's rooms, suites.
Okay, suites, yeah.
Are those maintained through this agreement as well?
So, I can answer that question for you. They have all of those set to expire at the end of this year, or automatically, so I think, am I correct? I believe Chris can confirm for me, but I think all of those contracts expire, so they'll all be transitioned over as new contracts.
Okay, all right.
So, if you have a box, you'll have to get a new one.
Okay. And that was all, that's all set, right?
Yeah, Foner has set that all up, so I believe almost every one of their contracts has already expired and is kind of on a transition period, or will expire. So, they've kind of got it all ready to hand off.
That's clean, that's clean. You guys talked about employee-owned and some things like that, and your culture with employees. How many employees do you see hiring in Grand Island?
I think that, I think there's, and the org chart in the proposal, I think 13 is the number, I think, at full capacity. That won't be immediately, but we'll build, and maybe it'll be more, maybe it'll be a little bit less, but that's a pretty good number.
Okay, all right. And then, I guess, I think that was my last question for you guys, somebody else might, I just wanted also, thank you guys. Again, I think your proposal is really strong, I'm really excited. Everything you just said, what I really heard is Eric Clapton's coming to town.
No, Elton John first.
Elton John, Kiss, and Eric Clapton. You do that, and I think we'll even get Mitch to show up, he'll come to those things. So, thank you guys, I'm really excited about what you're going to bring to it. It was talked about, Jay mentioned it, and I know it's just been talked about. I agree, I do not want the city booking concerts. I don't think that's our best role. I don't think it's our role to take on the risk. I am, I know I said some things that I wanted more talk about this, but the talk I wanted was to get to a point like this. So, I think that's really good. I guess I do have a question for you. If someone like Jay wants to throw a show, is that still an option, or are you the exclusive?
No, nothing exclusive about it, yeah.
Okay, all right.
We're working with promoters, co-promoters, and, yeah, we want everybody to be able to come in and present an event.
Without really dragging this out and getting into the weeds, there's really three ways a concert's going to take place. Either we go out and buy the show as a building, or the city wants us to risk and buy a show, and we promote it, hopefully break even or make money. Or we co-promote it with a promoter, and there's many co-promotion ways to do that, too, where you can co-promote with no risk to the building, but if they lose money, you're going to give every, all your soft costs back to the promoter, you won't charge them rent, but you're still, the building's still going to come out ahead, because the food and beverage will go to the operation bottom line in that scenario. The risk part, that's a whole nother conversation, and maybe down the road, the city might want to come up with a fund that we can, a risk fund that we can tap into and take risks on shows in the future, so, but that's not a conversation for tonight, but.
I know from working, you know, with the state fair a little bit, no one's happy with any concert ever, if you look on social media, it's always the worst idea ever. Eric Clapton aside, I think you'd be fine, but just knowing that you're never pleasing everybody with these things. I like that it's a private group that can brunt a lot of that, you guys, it's your thing, this is what you do. As mentioned, that you guys have all said Chris's name, so I'm going to risk the fine. Chris is here. Chris is good at doing horse racing, really, really well. So, I'm excited that that's what Foner can focus on. I want to see what you guys do with the venue, so, again, thank you. I think that's the end of my rambling questions. Thank you, guys.
Mr. Still.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I introduced the motion because I really believe in what you guys are doing. I was very impressed when I read the 65-page packet that we had. I was impressed of your, all the outlets that you promote for, and all the promotional stuff you do, and I think you guys are very professional, and you really have your act The one thing I see, though, is our backup is the lodging tax. We have a year to make that work, and by having that, we're going to save probably $700,000 a year, and what we pay you from what we collect. And I think city staff will probably put that away for future uses, to cover the depreciation that we need, and hopefully, they're going to probably look at renewing that lodging tax, because we'll need that, if you consider the amount of depreciation, and the roofing, and the heating and cooling, and the seats, and on and on and on. I mean, that place is 25 years old, and it needs to be worked on and refreshed and refurnished, but I think this is a good go, and I'm going to support you on it, and look forward to working with you guys and your team.
Mr. Lanfair.
One of the things of being farther down on the list to speak is that much of what you had in mind has already been covered. I am, I don't feel comfortable with this. Basically, I view this as an asset of the people, and it's coming too fast. If we put this off for two weeks, I would feel better. You know, I would like to have input from the public. This is their building in the end, do you understand? And I would like to know what they think of this plan. There are other options out there, and maybe, maybe they should be looked at before we vote on this. That's it.
Mr. Hawsey.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I do have a couple of questions for you. First of all, I am aware of the financial historic performance of a couple of arenas, you know, in Ralston and in Carney, and they've had a tough go of it from time to time, and I think it's the history of the beast, you know? So, I do, I am concerned about what happens when a concert loses, because everyone's concerned about that. Let me read something out of your proposal, and I want to make sure that I understand it correctly. What you said is, if the event loses money, the venue makes no money, but it does not lose money either. So, in the risk assessment part, you get paid 6% on the food and beverage commission, 10% on the gross revenue commission, $6,000 a month in the management fee, as it goes through COLA year after year, and then you have an incentive-based bonus. What is it that you give up if the event doesn't make any money? If it would, for whatever reason, not make money? What is it that you give up? Because when it says if the event loses money, the venue makes no money. So, what money is going to be helping to support the loss? That's what I'm looking for, is what are you giving up?
Okay. And if I could, first, by the way, you mentioned Ralston. Mayor Ralston came to us, we put together numbers, and we knew it wasn't going to make money, we knew it was going to lose a boatload of money. And he said, well, I can't deal with these numbers, I don't, I can't do this. We said, well, we don't want to touch it. So, I mean, we don't just go where we think we can make a quick buck and then leave in a few years, so believe me, I know exactly what you're talking about. What we give up is, you might give up rent, you would give up the soft costs that Tom was talking about, you might give up a share of the food and beverage, this would all be arranged in advance, you're not talking about doing this after the fact. So, maybe you pledged a certain portion of the profit side of the food and beverage that maybe you would have put into the pot, but maybe the building didn't give up anything, and VenueWorks was totally on the hook, and you got your fee, you're going to get your service fees, you're going to have a facility fee probably on the ticket, you're going to have the food and beverage, you're going to have a markup on the staffing that was there, that you're selling to the user of the building and the sponsor of the event. So, those little profit centers can be ticked to give back, if that's part of what you put into the original deal.
So, what you just said is that, so for every event, there's some sign-off that somebody is doing on the city's behalf, correct?
Yeah, that's what I said, we'd like to have somebody that we go back to and say, look, if there's going to be a risk. Now, if you're not going to go out of pocket, the deal that, we call that a no-risk co-pro, so maybe you don't have any downside. We've defined certain revenue streams from the event that might go to the promoter, but at the end of the day, in a no-risk promo, co-pro, you're no better, you're no worse off than if you didn't have an event at all. And you're better off for having brought the event to your community, and you probably have a few bucks no matter what, a couple of thousand dollars that you wouldn't have had if you hadn't done the event. So, that's what we call, it's an up, so, so here's the payoff, though, for the promoter, instead of having a 50-50 with the building or with us, they may have a 75-25, so we take a small bit of the top-side profit, if there is a profit, because we didn't take the risk. See what I mean?
So, my question maybe is for the administration. So, when we, who's going to sign that off? Is it going to be Matt? Is it going to be Pat? Is it going to be Laura? Who's going to, on the city's event? So, now we're involved in each event, signing off, who's doing it, or does it come?
You're involved in an annual budget, so the way the proposal is, is that the budget is presented to the city by December 1st of each year. And if you look on page 112 of the proposal, commissions at risk. For any fiscal year in which VenueWorks fails to achieve the approved budgeted GOP financial outcome for the venue, VenueWorks will forfeit up to 50% of any awarded commission fees to balance the shortfall amount. So, that's another way they put themselves at risk. So, each year, the city council will be provided with the budget, and approve the projected budget, and what it is that VenueWorks intends to achieve in the following contract year.
Okay. So, the other thing, my other question is in your pro forma, you had naming rights in the arena. So, we already have naming rights, I mean, part of the, if you look on one side of the arena, it's named after somebody, and if you look at the scoreboard, it's named after somebody, and if you look at the floor, it's probably named after somebody. How does the naming rights change effective, you know, January 1?
Well, if they're not available, then we obviously aren't going to sell them. I don't know the status of all.
So, the status of those naming rights is, there actually weren't ever any formal agreements between the city and Foner Park for those naming rights, but what we put in the RFP is that the Ihusen Arena and the Bosselman Conference Center naming would continue until city councils would want to change it, in recognition of the significant private contributions that were made by those community members. We are in the process of working on a citywide naming rights policy that we would use, not just for the event center, but for other city facilities. As you know, we've talked about Ryder Field, Veterans Sports Complex. So, any naming rights that are sold, VenueWorks would be marketing those naming rights, but the policy under which those naming rights were provided would be a policy that's adopted by the city council.
Yeah, I mean.
As it has been.
In the pro forma, I saw the revenue from the naming rights, and so I'm just curious, along with the suites, I understand the suite contracts ended, but I didn't know on the naming rights, so thank you very much, that's all I have.
I just wanted to mention, we're talking an awful lot about concerts, and the whole programming mix, it's probably going to be less than 5% of the events, but it's what everybody wants to talk about, that's what you get approached on Main Street, and what people want to talk to the building manager about. And what we hope is that we can bring some quality entertainment here in concerts and have success. We're going to have to figure out what that means, and what is successful, what isn't, over time, but that's the one thing. All the other events, someone mentioned earlier about the youth event, sporting events, and the cattle shows, I mean, that's what we want to attract, the multiple-day events that people are coming and staying in our hotels in Grand Island and eating in our restaurants, and so that's the focus, but it always goes to concerts, because it's the sexy thing to talk about at the buildings. And I just want to clarify that once.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation, and thank you for answering all the questions, and it's good that the council has questions, because they have concerns, and that's their job. So, I appreciate you being here tonight, and for your. We'll now proceed with Resolution 10B, approving fiscal year 2024 to 2025 fee schedule. Mr. Gleason? Mr. Gleason.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. This is just, as you saw in the packet, this, there were some state statutes that changed about the public records request, the ability to charge people for those that are out of state that aren't like the news or, or stuff like that, that we put into there that they need to contact each department and they can get a quote upfront and, and what that would look like. So that's added in. And then we had a few kind of, some things got missed on some different versions, so we just kind of are fixing some things. So you also have the red lines, so just if you have any questions or concerns, let me know.
Thank you, Mr. Gleason.
I'll be brief. So in light of my previous comments, will fees be then approved for the Heartland Event Center going forward?
Mrs. Fisk, you want to take that, please?
No, the Heartland Event Center fees are not in this, in this fee schedule. Those are part of the management agreement that will go into play. Yeah.
Okay. The only reason I bring that up is that I saw where the Heartland Public Shooting Park and Golf Course have fees that are approved and those are also outsourced. So then secondly, just philosophically, and I mentioned this to Todd, the Parks and Recreation Director, a little bit ago, when you, when you look at certain parts of the parks' fee structure, it's always mindful, I think, to go ahead and look at how we compare and how we compete to attract soccer tournaments, baseball, softball, you name it. And I kind of get the impression that we're, we've lost some big tournaments in our, that's why our fields aren't busy all the time, is because we're somewhat more expensive than maybe a Carney or a Hastings. So, and when you look at economic development and for, I think Todd said maybe those total fees might amount to $50,000. Well, when you think about if there were no fees attached to softball, fields and rental, just think that may be able to go ahead and attract more tournaments and more overnight lodging, more sales taxes and so forth. So I just make that comment to say economic development and the ability to attract visitors is a portion and I think influenced by some of those fees. So if they were eliminated, it might be helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Steele.
Council motion is in order. Mr. Lanfair.
We approve Resolution 2024-257.
Thank you. Mr. Conley.
I will second that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Resolution 10C, approving amendment to CDBG Contract Number 2019-3 with Grand Island Area Habitat for Humanity. Mrs. Alvedrez, good evening. Thank you for being here and presenting.
Thank you. This item is, as you mentioned, for amendment to our subrecipient contract. Habitat for Humanity received an allocation of funding back in 2019 and due to lots of different things, they kind of got a late start on this program. And then, if you remember, last year, we brought this forward to start the program over and they were able to get the application process open. They do currently have about three homes that are in the process and still waiting to be, have repairs completed in this owner-occupied rehabilitation program. We are currently right now waiting on a couple last pieces of HUD documentation before we can move forward with those repairs. And so this amendment is to allow them to continue utilizing the funds and giving them another year to fulfill that.
Thank you.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Carla. I'm here with Grand Island Area Habitat for Humanity. Again, in 2019, as Amber stated, our organization was asked to provide a program to help people who may be living in unsafe or incinerated conditions. Again, due to unforeseen circumstances surrounding COVID-19, significant administrative hurdles, we have been unable to distribute those funds. Let me tell you a little bit about our home preservation program. It is designed to provide critical home repair needs for people in our community. These repairs can include HVAC plumbing, electrical repairs, as well as making accommodations to people who are in need of accessibility within their homes, such as providing wider door framing, porch repairs and ramp installation. Our applications opened up in June. We currently have three applications waiting. Applications have met specific requirements, including, but not limited to income eligibility, a willingness to collaborate with our affiliate and showing a true need for these services. Once those funds, once the grants for those funds can be distributed, then we can proceed with contractor bidding for the necessary repair work. The cost for these repairs would go up to $10,000 per applicant. Again, these services are provided not only for the community members of Grand Island but also to members within Hall, Hamilton, Howard and Merrick County with the goal to empower people to live better lives and to live longer in their own homes. Thank you for your time. If you have any questions for myself, I can stay later to ask, answer any questions or you can reach out to our executive director, Lindsay Driggins. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Council members, Mr. Nickerson.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we approve 2024-258.
Thank you, Mr. Sheard.
Thank you. I will second that.
Discussion. Mr. Nickerson.
I do have a question for our Habitat rep, if she wouldn't mind coming back up for a little bit. Amber, thanks for sticking around after nine o'clock tonight. You know, sometimes that's the way it goes.
Yes.
Thank you for being here. I did have a question and I, a year ago when this was brought to us, I knew that there was a very tight timeframe for all this to be done. So I'm, I'm not surprised that, that we need to push this out a little bit. But I do have a question, and I guess I didn't realize at the time that it includes more than Hall County, so you, you're bigger than that. So that's, that's, I guess, good to know. The question I have is how do people know about the program? Because you got three applicants, but how in the world do they know about it?
At the time, the staff member that was with our affiliates was able to post through our social media and that is how people were able to kind of find out about it. It was just a couple of times that it was pushed through. So it's definitely something that if people were following our accounts, they were able to know about the program. However, that is something that we would love to expand upon and be able to reintroduce to our community so that more people know about it.
Sure, that would be great. And how many dollars are available? We've got three that could be up to 10,000 each, but is there a larger number, a bigger number or is there, is that capped right now?
Um, I believe so. For the CBD dollars, there is about 128,000. A part of that will be, a small chunk of that will go for administration. So roughly, probably a little over 100,000 will go to repairs. There will still be another application window going through. We were just kind of on this cusp of we needed to get a few going without all of them in place and get that environmental review process going and approved and then the rest will open back up and follow through without kind of overloading the system in the beginning. And then I believe they have partner funds that then are doing the homes in other parts of the counties and other counties.
Very good. Well, I think it's a great program for, for people to have a chance to upgrade some very important things. So I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Ordinance 11A, consideration of approving assessments for South Locust Business Improvement District. Is there a motion to suspend the statutory rules regarding ordinances? Mr. Lanfair.
I move we suspend the statutory rules concerning ordinances.
Mr. Sheard.
Thank you. I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Mr. Gleason, please present on ordinance number 9992.
This is the action item from earlier this morning, excuse me, when you sat as the Board of Equalization for the BID.
Thank you, Mr. Gleason. Waiting for a motion. Mr. Sheard.
Thank you. I move that we pass ordinance?
Ordinance.
Ordinance 9992.
Thank you, Mr. Sheard. Mr. Conley.
I will second that motion.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Ordinance 11B, consideration to amend Section 38-16 of the Grand Island City Code to clarify the application of the Good Life District Occupation Tax to all taxable transactions occurring within the program area. Is there a motion to suspend the statutory rules? Mr. Lanfair.
I move we suspend the statutory rules concerning ordinances.
Thank you, Mr. Pollak. Thank you. Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Mrs. Fisk, please present on ordinance number 9993.
Counsel, this is, as promised, some cleanup language, which hopefully you won't see too much of with the Good Life District Program ordinance. This is designed to make sure we're capturing all taxable transactions that are occurring in the district rather than just those occurring at physical businesses located in the district. Everything from registering your car and address within, within the district that you purchased elsewhere to online purchases, just trying to make sure we really capture everything that is a taxable transaction, not subject to state sales tax at the same rate. So hopefully just a housekeeping bill for you.
Thank you for your diligence in that regard. Is there a motion, counsel? Mr. Lanfair.
I move we approve ordinance 9993.
Mrs. Fitzky.
Thank you. I would second that.
Thank you, Mrs. Fitzky. Any discussion? Mr. Nickerson.
Yeah, Carrie, we're seven days, eight days now into this new process, this new collection process. And I know for a fact, one business is doing something differently and I've already talked to Brian Schultz about it. You know, it's just something that I've found. And I talked to Brian because he's kind of the tax guy, didn't go to Matt right away. But anyway, when is the first chance to really analyze how things are going for this? Is it in one-month increments? And I know it takes a week or so probably for everything to file through or everything. Is that, is that how we take the little snapshots to see how things are going and reporting?
Yeah, I think we'll, we'll start getting monthly pictures after this first month. The, the payers of the occupation tax have to remit it monthly. There's, of course, that processing time. So we'll start getting little snippets here, hopefully identifying these opportunities to refine things a bit. My guess is we'll have our first real full picture at the end of this first quarter, but we'll start getting some health checks here as soon as possible. And honestly, I think some of the questions some of these businesses have had have been health checks for us even before the revenues coming in. Some of their questions have caught things like this that we need to clean up. So I think we're getting pretty good response and feedback and I think the businesses are keeping Brian busy, kind of helping them implement this, but so far, no major hurdles.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Ordinance number 11C, consideration to create a consolidated tax oversight committee. Is there a motion to suspend the statutory rules? Mr. Lanfair.
Yeah, and I move that we suspend the statutory rules concerning ordinances.
And thank you again. Mr. Steele. Thank you. Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Regarding ordinance number 9994, Mrs. McAlum, please present.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, historically, as, as Mr. DePay indicated earlier, the city has had both an occupation tax oversight committee and a citizen advisory review committee. The tax oversight, or the occupation tax oversight committee oversees the food and beverage tax funds and the spending. And the citizens advisory review committee oversees the spending of the Municipal Economic Development Act. These two committees have functionally the same composition and duties. And based on the experience we've had with the number of members that are required for each committee, we have seen the number of vacancies on those committees increase over time, which then subsequently leads to problems with quorum. We were unable to hold meetings for both committees, I believe, through the last six months of last year. And luckily, we've, we've been able to go forward this year with the commitment of the three members on food and beverage. And then we've had the addition of some new members on the, the citizen advisory review committee. So we have discussed with both of those committees whether the consolidation of the two committees into a single committee, a combined committee, that would exercise those citizen oversight duties as needed makes sense. We received unanimous support from both, the members of both committees, based on the similarity of the duties and the ability to maximize efficiencies of training on citizen oversight duties and the duties that those committees exercise. So what you have before you tonight is staff's proposal to create one consolidated tax oversight committee that will exercise the duties as prescribed by state statute and city code for each of these previously standalone committees. In addition, code title sections related to the economic development program are being amended for clarity within this version. Our proposal, as you can see in the ordinance itself, is that the two committees would simply be combined into seven voting members to start. We think with transitions and people coming off of terms, that's the number that we'll actually be able to muster from the two combined committees of nine people right now. Four members would constitute a quorum and they would meet at least quarterly to perform their statutory duties, which again are laid out in state statute and city code for the economic development program and then in city code for the food and beverage tax oversight. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Sheard.
Thank you. I move that we pass ordinance 9994.
Thank you, Mrs. Fitzky.
Thank you, Mayor. I would second that.
Thank you. Any discussion? Mr. Sheard.
Thank you. Having served on the citizens review committee, I appreciate us doing this. We did not have enough to keep us busy quarterly to meet, so I think having one big is a very good use of consolidation. And I think those members will probably thank you for it. So great, great idea.
Please vote. Motion adopted.
We need to take up two executive sessions, but first I want to mention that Mr. Peters and Mr. Richter offered to stick around after the meeting if you had any questions, but I don't want to detain them needlessly. Can they be excused? Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. I don't, I don't want you to have to sit out here while we go back into executive session. Well, yes. Thank you. Council members, now regarding 12A, we have two matters for executive session. Executive session to discuss collective bargaining with the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Service Clerical Finance Bargaining Unit and executive session to discuss strategy and negotiation authority with respect to a prospective real estate purchase by the Public Works Department. For those two items, is there a motion to, we do have a motion. Mrs. Fitzky.
Thank you, Mayor. I would make a motion that we go into an executive session.
Thank you. Mr. Conley.
I will second that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
We are going into executive session at 9:28 PM.